Calling gravel costs, uh, having from twenty twelve to twenty two, twenty two increased fifty-two percent. Twenty-four cents a mile to thirty-eight, um, laying up gravel, fifty-six dollars a month, eighty-four dollars a month, thirty-nine percent. Cori tube, ninety-five percent increase, um, cover aggregate, ninety-two percent increase. Fog oil, this is a big one, a hundred and seventy-two percent increase. It went from four hundred and fifty-nine dollars to twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
What was that worth?
Uh, the fog oil for the new building. Um, the oil, five-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars to nine-hundred-and-ninety, seventy-three percent increase. The hot asphalt mixed oil, fifty-five dollars to ninety-two dollars, eighty percent increase. Truck chassis, uh, twenty-twelve average price, eighty-one thousand seven hundred. Twenty-twenty-two, a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, nine-hundred, eighty-seven percent increase. Motor grader, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand to four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, eighty-one point six percent increase. And wheel loaders, a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, a hundred-and-four percent increase. So, the answer is simple. The state needs to cap costs at three percent or CPI, whatever it is.
That's what we should have had a five-year plan to replace upgrade our equipment, you know?
Yeah, well, we did until twenty ninety hit, and then not have not have any. But, the actual end of saying is how are you supposed to, when char oil is increasing at a hundred-and-seventy-two percent, how does a three percent increase in property tax cover that? Or CPI whatsoever is less. Sometimes CPI is less than three percent. Most of the time it actually hits. How do you cover that? Well, you probably see the hat on trucks. I mean, what's, what's a, what's a used, can you even get a new, good truck?
Not a good one. I mean, everybody all day with a three year. So, I mean, you've got a cycle every three years.
Thank you.
How many miles would you get on one of those things, you know? I mean, how long do you keep?
Four hundred.
How close would you, you break down on where, where is, what's going to be the cost?
You know, even, even if that was the warranty work doesn't make much difference because you're sitting in Atlanta, Georgia. Break down. It's covered under warranty, but you're sitting there for two years. Does it take that long to get parts or takes that long for you to hit at their shop? See, my purchase, you know, C O D.
We'll resume, we'll resume the meeting in five minutes. So, you gotta gobble. Gary, you left too quick.
You guys wanted to just discuss when to meet again?
Pardon?
Do you want to discuss on when we're gonna meet again? To discuss everything? Because I'll advertise for two weeks in August. We'll approve, and the hearing will be on September fifth. And we'll approve, uh, the annual budget on the nineteenth.
And I was gonna see what Wanda's schedule is for the next meeting. I think is what we talked about, didn't we? See, make sure she can be there.
Well, that'll be regular kind of meetings, right? You'll do the advertising, it will be regular kind of meetings and have the hearings, right? They won't be special?
No, yeah. The first thing will be September eighth.
Yep, you mean? Yep, September fifth.
Did I say eight? Yep, September fifth.
How soon will we get, uh, a revised budget with income and revenues?
You have the revenues.
Yeah, I saw them, but... Does it show down here on the balance? Maybe I missed it.
You're spitting on my paper, don't you? That's just the total. Those are just estimates, and that won't change. Because the levies aren't approved or anything, so...
And what were the expenses?
Uh, total, did I have your, as of right now, without any changes or?
Yep.
It's like twenty-five something. It's like six-hundred-and-thirty, approximately six-hundred-and-thirty less than last year. If we don't do any changes.
The expenditures are that much less than last year. And, did I miss the total revenue present, or projection?
On the bottom.
Of like the last page?
It, each, like, there's general...
Oh, so they're not, there's not a collection?
No, there's general revenue highway.
Should've brought a toothpick.
I'm not showing you what I have.
I've got?
Oh, it's just what I have.
I thought we did, I thought we did twenty-five hundred last year. Did we do five thousand last year for that? I thought we did twenty-five hundred last year for that.
No, you, you lowered it to fifteen, to five thou, for what?
Yep. Um, we should send that in too, because they, they talked about, uh, county airports. At one, not county ran airports, but county funding for airports. And I think the only other county that contributes to an airport is Custer County in the state. Well, I'll have to send some data in for this one.
Okay, the five minutes, I think, is up, so I'll entertain a motion to come back and do session.
So moved.
Dan moves. Brian seconds. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same, most carries. Amy?
Honorable Chairman, this is the county commission. There we go. Honorable Chairman, members of the commission, and Patty and, and those listening. Um, just here from the city of Yankton to talk about our proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, uh, budget and the operations that the city and county share in cost to operate. I think that we, you all got the letter with the budget request, is that correct? Okay. Um, we weren't sure we were operating under a timeline of Patty's vacation. We didn't think she'd actually take a two-week vacation, so without, so we didn't know for sure if you got that. Um, I have some staff with me, but because it's a Friday in the summer, um, we don't have everyone here, but we'll do our best to answer any questions that you have. Um, we'll talk a little bit about each of the, uh, areas here, and then happy to answer any questions you have. The senior citizen center, uh, this year for twenty-twenty-three, um, your share that was, uh, requested and approved is thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven. Slight increase for next year, uh, which is, the request is thirty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um, and so, um, not a lot of capital there. Sometimes we have something happen at the senior center that's unanticipated. Um, and then, of course, we, we come back and talk to you about that. But, um, we do know out into the future, we have to look at the parking lot. And Dave Mingo, who oversees, um, that facility, um, from the city side, wanted me to mention that, you know, that will be a large capital expense, and we'll do that in phases and try to phase that out over a couple of years. Uh, however, that's coming in upcoming, uh, budget years. But for this year, twenty-twenty-four, we're requesting the thirty-four seven eighty-eight. Uh, Chan Gurnee Airport, we're request, regret, requesting fifteen thousand dollars. Um, what was adopted in twenty-twenty-three was five thousand dollars. And, um, Adam Haberman, our city engineer who oversees, um, airport operations, put together a little information on the airport and thought maybe having some information about the airport and its operations might be beneficial, um, to the commission. So, I'll give you that to share. And, uh, of course, we're asking, uh, for little sharper pencils on the airport. One of the things that, um, you know, I think people misunderstand is that it's really part of our infrastructure, our, um, transportation system. It's also a large part of our economic development. Um, and it's also part of our medical community. So, uh, a lot of transfers take place from Chan Gurnee, um, not just to Avera, but to other hospitals, and, and even the tribes use them, um, for transfers for medical situations. So, it is an important facility. Um, we have done a lot of capital improvements out there recently, and, um, it's really, um, a professionally-run airport. So, um, requesting again fifteen thousand. All of the airport board members are, uh, obviously Yankton County residents. However, the contribution from the county does allow for a, a member of that, uh, board to be, uh, able to be someone who lives outside city limits. Um, I don't believe right now there's anyone outside of city limits who, um, is on that airport board, but as long as the county's contributing, um, there is that opportunity. Uh, dispatch center, uh, our E-nine-one-one funds, uh, from the county, uh, go to operate the dispatch center. Last year, you approved a contr, requested contribution of a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. And this year, we're requesting a hundred-and-eighty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars, uh, which is a five percent inflationary adjustment. Of course, part of that is, um, staffing. Part of those funds are staffing and, and operations, which, as you're talking about here, are just continuing to increase. Uh, we do have our, um, director of information services here, so if you have detailed questions about, uh, dispatch and, and what those funds go to, we can talk about that. Uh, community library, um, is, uh, something also that you've contributed to over the years. We're requesting, uh, twenty-four thousand. Uh, in twenty-twenty-three, you approved fifteen thousand, uh, for that. And, uh, we're again requesting twenty-four thousand. Have some big expenses coming up in the air, in the library, one of them being a roof replacement. Um, Dana Schmidt is here, our library director, and if you want to talk to her, she'll tell you that, um, the library is more, uh, much more than just the space for, uh, books and things of that they, nature. Their programming has gone, um, crazy these last couple of years. Uh, some programs having more than four hundred people attend. Uh, they have a lot of different types of media. Uh, certainly, um, community members use their meeting space. They also proctor tests. So, there's more services that go on there than just go in and check out a book and come out. So, um, they're true to their mission of being beyond books. Or the beginning is just books, or some, something such like that. Books are just the beginning. So, that's the request. Uh, if you total up the right-hand column there, it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollar request. Can round that up to however you'd like, and nobody would complain. But, I'd like to hear what questions you have, if any, from us. Uh, my budget is due for your benefit to the city commissioners on, uh, August the first, and then it'll be presented to the commission, uh, you know, the fourteenth of August, and then they'll move through there. Public hearing and adoption process about, sounds like about the same schedule you guys will have.
Amy, do you have a final number on like what your guys' proposed total budget is for the city for this year, a total amount?
Well, we're, we're working on that this morning, but we're thinking, um, total city budget somewhere in the eighty, eighty-one million frame. Now, that includes, you know, probably twenty million in grant, at least. More than that, Dwayne is saying. So, um, you know, quite a, all the projects, all the S R F funds. And it's scary when you look at that a little bit in a, in a pie chart, how much of our, um, how much of our budget is actually grant or loan?
Yeah, we go to rely on grants so much, and then when those aren't available anymore, we get in trouble, so I appreciate it. John and I would like to sit on the city-county planning, and I'd just, uh, like to say for all you guys, it's a pleasure working with you, so...
Certainly.
We got a good relationship with the city and counties. I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman, unless anybody else does.
Anybody else have questions? I'd entertain a motion then?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Not yet.
Otherwise, I'll make one for you. All right. Well, if you have any questions and they come up, you know where to find me, and, and we can certainly visit with Patty too if she has questions, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll wake up here. Historical society. Okay, shall we do, uh, what? Oh, we're early now. Well, I guess we could, uh...
We could kind of kick around. I guess, um, in traditionally, we've, uh, and I'm, I think we'll, we should, the, the, uh, dispatch center, it comes from E-Y, E-nine-one-one dollars. So, we need to full, fund that at the full amount, obviously, because that's all we can spend that on. Uh, as far as our seniors, uh, I think we need to take care of our senior citizens. Uh, one of the important things, and, you know, Don and, and all you guys realize, a lot of that, um, funding goes to, to keep them healthy and fed, and, and, uh, that keeps them out of the hospital. So, I, I, I feel we should fund them, maybe, you know, fund them at the full amount. Uh, the, the airport, uh, I may be a little different on, from what I understand, is we're probably one of two counties that fund an airport, Custer being the other one. And, uh, I think it is important, but maybe a twenty-five hundred dollar might be more appropriate. I'm fine with five thousand dollars too. What are you guys thinking? We don't have to decide either, but...
I'm just kind of looking at, and there's, there's a fair amount of crop dusting and stuff for the, for the agricultural world also that goes on out there.
Sure, sure. No, there, there is, and there's a, a lot of, of federal grants, you know, that the city gets. And, and those grants, from the presentation I received the other days, most of them aren't an eighty-twenty split. They're a hundred percent because of their federal with aviation, and so that, uh, maybe should be considered too, so... We don't have to decide today, but...
Sure.
I'm fine keeping it at five thousand or maybe something else, but again, we're one of two counties in the state that fund airports. And then, uh, I don't, what are you thinking for the library? I think we need to continue funding the library. You're on the board, Ryan. We, we've done it at, you know, fifteen thousand for quite some time. You thinking that's still good for you, or?
I mean, yeah.
It's important.
Off the top of my head, yes, but, uh, yeah, I think, yeah, I'll have to look at the whole, as, everything as a totality first, and then...
Sure.
And then come back, I mean, and see what we can do there.
Did you change the airport one?
Not necessarily, yeah.
No, no, we haven't. We were just kicking around ideas, so...
What was the reasoning for the drop from twenty-four thousand in twenty-three?
For what?
Oh, never mind, never mind, that was proposed, down to fifteen, never mind. They requested twenty-four, twenty-three.
I guess, you know, with, with the airport, I know that, um, as mentioned, a, a lot, there's a lot of medevac flights, and that's already, you know, driving out there, and our costs with that too, so... If we want to go on, I mean, I'm the liaison for the historical society. I could probably cover that if you want. I don't see Crystal here.
Yep, she, she'll be here.
Okay.
She said she'll be here.
Well, bring up, uh, article Gary sent me yesterday, I think, from Lake County. Right? Yeah. They were, uh, forced with a severe budgeting, uh, problem. They had, uh, two choices that they thought could take. One was a, an opt-out, and that was for, uh, two-point-eight million over five years. Uh, would cost, uh, the average home, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home would cost about a thousand dollars a year more tax. Was that, is that right, Gary? You remember? And then that wouldn't quite service it, but it'd be, be close. And their other option was to, uh, do what, the three percent increase? And that wouldn't, that wouldn't cover their shortfall, so, uh, they're looking at the op-out, opt-out. And of course, when we get these figures, uh, totaled up and, and, uh, calculate what happens to our general fund over the year using the proposed budget, uh, we may be faced with, uh, the same, the same issue.
Civil decisions.
Yeah. And, you know, you bring up excellent points, and some of this, we really don't have a lot of control over. For example, our, our, the increases in our jail, we don't have a choice. We have inmates, we have to confine in the jail, and there's not much option. If we, we have to keep them safe, and that means we're going to have to hire extra people. And the juvenile detention process mandated by state law, as those numbers increase, it's an increase on our state's attorney's office and increased, uh...
I think we do better with the population that's in jail, collecting money on, than we do the ones that are criminals that get by with it.
Well, you, you're, you're right, and, uh, in that regard, there, there's not a lot of choice that we have, but we have to do it, uh... Uh, Patty, what are we roughly looking at for revenue for, um, coming into the county? I know we're, we're not a hundred percent there, but what, what do you think their, our budget's gonna be?
At the bottom, uh, you know, I have a, an estimation of, uh, a little over ten million.
Okay, that, that'll be the...
Yeah, but that has a lot to do with tax, you know, taxes are important, levies, but that's...
So, we'll have about ten million coming in? And just compare that to the city of eighty-one million. I'm just, just so people can understand, and, um, you know, it's a big difference.
What was our expenses, quick, uh, estimated according to this?
This is twenty-four. Just if you don't change anything.
It's awful small print for an old man.
I know. I don't know how to get it bigger, um, the...
Looks to me like about sixteen.
Pardon me?
Looks to me like about sixteen. Is that right?
Well, twenty-five, two forty-eight this year. Last year was two million eight eighty-two.
Twenty-five million eight eighty-two.
Are, are you on the...
Yeah, twenty-five.
Are you on the provisional budget, Patty?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and where are you at, you're on the...
That, I have the totals up at the top with it, what it is, what this year is.
Okay.
And then what was last year.
Okay, so, the property, the property tax levy will be, uh, of seven-point-three million. And then we got license and permits, a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, intergovernmental revenue. Now, what, what is that, intergovernmental revenue, basically? What is that?
That is, um...
Thirty, or three-thirty?
That is like the jail, the, uh, license fees, treasurer license fees, fees.
Registered deeds.
Yep, all the registered deeds, um, our bank franchise, um...
Alcohol taxes, things like that? Are those in there?
Alco, alcohol taxes are in license and permits.
Okay.
Do we have, uh, have we, have, have you estimated what changes would be in the, uh, general fund based on these figures?
The difference here?
Yeah, difference between, uh, the beginning and the ending of the year.
More than, more than half of our budget, um, comes from...
You said, uh...
There's still a tip on Napa Junction, ain't there? When's that expire?
Tip on Napa Junction, is that twenty thirty-four?
I have my sheet.
Probably twenty thirty, it's twenty years from twenty fourteen. Probably twenty thirty, it's twenty years from twenty fourteen.
There's a long ways out. There's a long ways out.
We got a while.
Plus, we don't uh, have much of an idea what the value will be of it.
That's what scares me.
Could be almost nothing.
That's the only one that the county has, though, isn't it?
No, well, that
Twenty thirty-six.
Twenty thirty, well, the county has that one, but then Nancy, the city has a number of TIFs too, do they not, correct?
Yeah, the, the Westbrook one is the one that's coming off next.
What, do you know when that is?
Twenty twenty-six, I believe.
Um, the, the only TIF of the counties is Napa, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're, they're paying uh, more than what their payment is, so, you know, it might be less.
Good deal. So, do, did we have, uh, did we have a spot where all the proposed budgets that they have are added up? With, in, in, and uh, with these revenues then?
No.
Okay, we haven't done that.
I can um, run a report, revenue versus expenditures.
I, I guess I'd like to see kinda now that we have, we have the majority of the department heads that have reported. It'd be nice, cause we do have some sig- pretty significant increases in a few departments. I'd like to see where that lands with the proposed revenue that we're gonna get and uh, crossing my fingers
Well, we can't, we can't make a decision until we get that.
No, no, yeah, you're exactly right. We gotta, I'm, I'm hoping that we're gonna be in the black and not the red. Cause if we're in the red, then we're gonna have to, have to
Well, you'll have to, cause all, most of the departments are in the general fund.
Yeah.
So you have, um, I don't have the general fund.
Yeah.
Um, but the revenue for the general fund is just the general fund is at ten million, one fifty-six. And I don't have a report for the expenditures for
Okay.
The general fund. So you're gonna have your revenue, which is gonna be collected, and then your expenditures. And I can have a report.
Okay.
You know, the next meeting.
Yeah, no, that, that'd, that'd be great.
Yeah, we, we really need that, I think, before we, cause there's the, the trouble with a budget like we have, other than maybe highway jails and, and uh, maybe one or two others that is a major expenses is in employees. Administrative expenses, and that means you're gonna you're gonna have to cut.
And
Cause right now
And, and to, to your point, Don, you know, by, by state law, we're limited to CPI or three percent, whichever is less. But I mean, you, you and I have been on the county for a while. I think we've always given at least a three percent raise. Last year it was six. This time it's four point four. That means our budget is going less far, less far each time, so we have less and less money each time and and in this environment of four percent raises, we're, we're losing people still at that rate. And every year we got less and less money to play with and at some point, the, the straw that breaks the camel back is coming and when that is, I don't know, but it's, it's tough. So, yeah, uh, what, why we're, we, we got some time, um, I, I didn't realize uh, the soil conservation uh, lady Sarah was, was leaving, but maybe that's a conversation we can have about um, consolidating that department into something else. I, I don't know, I mean, what are your guys' thoughts? I know she's in, important in that office, but you know, maybe we
Seems like it might fit out there in the highway department with the weeds.
There, or maybe, you know, an extension or something like that, uh, even part-time. May, maybe that, that floats there, two days a week there or there. I, I just, I don't know if we can keep adding people when we're dealing with these kind of numbers, I
Yep.
I just, the time to do it is when somebody's leaving and I'd rather do that than somebody, have to cut somebody when they're here already.
Okay, right now, we're looking at, just for the general fund budget, and that's with the uh, county accumulations to the ambulance and the emergency management, um, is fifteen million, eight eighty-seven, three fifty-eight.
Four.
Budget for, for, no, that's the expenditure
Expenditures.
Budget for twenty twenty-four. And then the estimated revenue was ten million, one fifty-eight.
Does it work out?
No.
So
But it never does. I mean, it never does. You're never gonna have it match. That's just, you know, the county just doesn't generate that much revenue.
I thought, I thought
That's why we have
We've usually been closer than that, though, haven't we? I mean
No, last year was
Well, cause, cause last year, we didn't, we have quite a bit of ARPA dollars and, and things like that, though.
Well, that, that's not in the general fund.
See, and that's why I think we need to take a look at projections for this year, for the end of this year, and compare them to what the requests are. I know there's, I know there's an inflationary rate that, you know, things don't cost, aren't gonna cost the same next year as they do this year, but it's gonna be a closer number than, than what.
But that, you know, then your departments, like uh, uh, like my office, uh, I don't generate any revenue.
I, I understand that, but overall
So I can't, I can't jury money to fill my budget. I mean, it's just
No, 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 I'm just saying as far as expenditures, projected expenditures versus projected revenue as a whole. Is where I'm saying that, that it'd be nice if we had them, and we can get them, I'm sure. You have through, through June now, which the numbers that we had presented to us were through April, so I can go through and readjust those projections.
I mean, I can give you a report, um, for June, I mean, uh
I think you got, I think we have that, don't we?
No, Paul has, he did his on the zone.
Oh, okay, 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 yeah.
I, I think what the, the three percent CPI cap, the counties have been able to limp and gimp along and survive, but with this explosion of inflation now and costs skyrocketing, it's, it's really coming to the breaking point now. You know, like what I, when I told you that the like fog oil is going up a hundred and seventy-two percent in truck, truck chassis, it's, it's, you know, particularly with the highway department.
And exactly, and that's why we need to take a look at changing that five-year plan.
Yeah, exactly.
Reducing some of the, the costs there.
And unfortunately, you know, with the highway department not being uh,
Revenue generator.
What, revenue generator or statutorily required, it's probably one of the first things that since, unfortunately, it's a reality, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Do you wanna start doing those other until they start coming? Those other ones?
We can prob- can't we go through and do like predatory uh?
That's in there.
Yep.
Others. Let's go to others and
That one uh, sheet that I gave you, um, to add, um, will be in here.
Which one was that, Patty?
That's that, uh
I got it. I got too many sheets, I'm sorry.
Drainage?
Drainage.
Yep.
The last one of these three.
Six twenty-four is in there. And then the other ones are
It was one of these.
Okay, oh, yeah, I think that's in the other one. I just stuck the whole sheet in there.
Start going down through them, huh? Contingency.
I think that's a good number. I hope we don't use it.
Yeah, I don't think we didn't use it all last year, but you just, uh, you know, you don't know if something comes up for any department.
If we use it, it's bad. I'm fine with keeping it that way.
After that court expense?
You know, and I know we put five hundred thousand in it last year, but you know, and now it's four ninety-eight. You know, it's just hard to estimate the, the expenditures from this.
I think, I don't know, probably leave it at
Change any of these?
I'd probably leave it at five hundred because we almost, we've almost hit that a couple times. I mean, five hundred's probably a good even number. You know, you never know when you're gonna get a murder trial or something like that. I know when we had you, those high-profile ones, we were having to fly people in from all over the country. That's all on our dime, you know, of course, you know.
Do you want me to add that back into neglected or up to?
Yeah, I guess I would, I would just keep it at five hundred and move on, but I mean, we've been per- you, this is impossible to predict. We don't know, I mean, there could be a, a shooting tomorrow and
And again, these are required things, so it's like
Yeah.
It's not like we can just say, oh, we won't do this one.
I'd almost say realistically.
If we lower it, then we'll guarantee we'll need it. That's the only thing.
I'd say, uh, realistically, under professional services and fees, uh, that may, might well be in the five hundred area.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I'm, I was just saying
Raising the whole thing up to five hundred is, is, is two thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
We're peeing in the wind.
I'm thinking a nice even number for accounting purposes and just moving on, I guess, but that's kinda what I'm, what I'm thinking about. And, and look, look what happened in Bonhomme and Scotland. I mean, these, there's no way to predict if you're gonna need this, so.
So what, what final?
I, I would, what do you guys think? Five hundred thousand total?
Are you Justin?
I am.
He's Justin.
Okay. You can wait.
What did you guys do with that?
Just, we, I think we wanted to go to total of five hundred thousand and just nice even number for you, Patty.
Next one's data processing, that's probably pretty
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
The next item is uh
Is that, is that gonna be enough? The, you know, the reason I ask is we were, twenty twenty-two, we were at a hundred and nine thousand. Twenty twenty, we were at a hundred and six thousand. I mean, we're gonna exceed that. We're at, you, you know, I know we're at a hundred and fifteen this year. I guess why are we at so much less year-to-date this year? I mean, why is the
It's just like, it's like so, from last year to this
They're refreshed.
Okay.
You know, now each office is doing their own refresh. I mean, I can add
So that's changed, or has, the accounting of it has changed, not the actual expense? Okay, so
Okay.
Okay, that, that makes sense then, alright.
Yeah, he's on time, isn't he? Justin, wanna come up?
Sure.
Good.
Um, so I am here representing the Kramer Kenyon Heritage Health. And uh, I guess any questions from me? Currently, we are still attempting to come back from uh, post-COVID, uh, with trying to get some numbers back up on our stuff. I guess we are, I know you, we've received two thousand last year. Um, I guess we were asking for a possible increase for this year, as we've got some larger projects that we need to kinda get ready for. We are attempting currently to fundraise for a new roof. Uh, that's gonna be the big one, and then trying to just keep everything afloat with what we have. Um, currently, our insurance has gone up, I believe about four thousand dollars in the last year. And that's really took a chunk out of us. Our current budget looks like the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, we're gonna end up with uh, a carryover balance of unfortunately about eighteen, little over eighteen hundred dollars.
Do you guys get a, I, I believe we tax exempt then, correct?
For the meat bill?
Yeah, no, no, for Kramer Kenyon, right?
No, it's for the meat.
Okay.
The, the tax, the levy? Yeah, that's for the meat.
No, no, I'm saying you're, you're Kramer Kenyon, right?
Yes.
And when we do property tax, we exempt you guys for, you don't pay property tax, correct?
I believe we do.
Okay, I'm gonna check that out right now, cause I, I'm saying that might be a better way to handle that, um, uh, is have him go to the DOE and get on the rolls for that. What, what is your address for that place?
Five oh nine Pine.
Okay. So heritage homes?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, it looks like you, you are not taxed, um, which is good. So, so I guess from, from my point of view, I'm, I guess I'm fine with giving you, um, you know, the continued donation, but in addition to that, um, our main source of funding is property tax. So we are also giving you an exemption. I don't know what that piece of property, it prob- probably worth three, four hundred thousand if it was individually owned, and so you're getting that as well, you know, from us since you're not paying property tax, so that's
Okay.
An additional source, which is good for you, so uh, that's probably just something you didn't realize and and so, so, and I was gonna say, if you were paying property tax, that would be something we would, we would help you out with, cause that would help your bottom line.
Explain to us uh, what uh, the Kramer Kenyon home does to enhance the culture of Yankton?
Well, um, the Kramer Kenyon home is the, I wanna say, one of the most original houses in Yankton. If you've ever been through it, we've, the wall coverings, the furniture, everything we've been able to recover, obtain and restore. Down to the wallpaper and light fixtures, even in the helm.
Well, I, I think you guys have done a marvelous job at that, but
Yeah.
What I'm asking is, what does it bring back to the community?
Um, I guess showing Yankton history, bringing kinda showing a, a before time on how everything was, and we even down to our fundraising with the murder mystery dinners and everything else, we've got, you know, we try to base everything back down in eighteen eighty-nine, eighteen ninety-five, um, and even within the characters of the dinners, we we incorporate people that physically lived in that time in Yankton and would have been everything from business owners to farmers to um, we try to give back as much as, as much as we physically can. We give tours and I guess we just try to show the culture and the history on what we, on what we can.
Do you have tours, or do you, does someone have to make an appointment to come look at?
No, um, we have scheduled times for tours, um, Monday through Friday. Um, it is from one Um, it is from one to, I believe, four. And we don't, we ask for the donation. We don't charge you for, for the tour. We ask that you just donate towards it for it. And currently, um, with me just, just taking over the president of the board currently, I'm trying to come up with um, new ways of possibly gaining funds on, if it be different events, trying to get things out there a little more, a little more advertising because I think people have kind of forgotten about us a bit and I'm trying to get us back up where we should and need to be.
Well, this is a, a drop in the bucket on, on the total budget.
Yeah.
If I were, uh, too, uh, cut, I'd probably cut yours. If it was just based on getting down there, but there isn't enough to cut to make a difference. But I'd like to see some value added to the community that we can say, yeah, uh, we, we're a part of that. Anybody else have any thoughts? I guess not.
I, I kind of agree with Don, but at the same token, I think that, like you mentioning, advertising and things like that, there's gotta be tourism draws to that house. I've been through it fifteen years ago, so I'm sure that it's, it's probably even better now than it was then.
Oh, it's nice.
Um, so I think if, you know, if, if you can figure out a way to use these two thousand dollars that the county can give you to get advertisements and things like that down in the, the lake area and throughout the, with, get together with however Thrive advertises or whatever and bring people in to visit that house. That would make sense to me and, and it really doesn't bring a whole lot back to the county, but somewhere along the line, there's a tax issue or something that we can, we can hopefully collect something on, so.
Yeah, and I, I think a lot of times people forget that, um, when, when we waive the property tax, that really in a lot of ways is a contribution by the, the county, you know, to your organization.
It really is.
People forget about that, so, um, so, yeah, we wish you the best of luck. I know how it is working with, you know, non, nonprofits. It's a, it's a tough business, so. Good luck to you, so. Yeah, I'm fine with continuing at two thousand, right?
I'll graciously accept anything you guys are willing to donate.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We could do all the organization ones. Yeah, okay, Jesse?
Still ten minutes though, correct? Who wants to stay ahead? Well, thank you, commissioners, for allotting some time to me today to talk about pathways. I know you have the letter, or hopefully you had a chance to read the letter that I sent and I won't, I'll try to stay away from that just to bring something new to the table. Um, I definitely wanna leave time for your questions if you have them, so I'd really like to just kind of reiterate the importance of pathway services for our community, our county. As you may know, we, we performed a recent expansion on fe- in February of two thousand twenty-two. We created Yankton's first true emergency night-by-night shelter. That allowed us to increase our capacity by seventy-five percent, so being able to serve about forty-eight people to eighty-four people. And it has eliminated our waiting list for individual adults. Um, and that, that's been very exciting just to see that a- any individual adult has a spot to go each night to be connected with services or, you know, just get out of the elements, have a safe place to sleep. And what that also did was allow us to increase the services that we're providing in the upstairs portion of our shelter. And it doubled the, the number of rooms we have for households with children. We used to have four, now we have eight. That's not near enough. We have a, our, our family waiting list right now is right at thirty. We have a hundred and twenty-five approximately people in there, seventy-five of those are children. So we know that more work needs to be done there, um, and we'll talk about kind of where we're at with that. But in addition, about two years ago, since the last time that I presented to you, we have entered a partnership with the South Dakota Department of Corrections, started our community transition program. That's for individuals who are looking to parole out of incarceration. They have nowhere to go, so they can come to our shelter and receive those services in a safe environment and, um, get back into the community. And we have eight beds for them now.
Do most of them come out of Yankton?
Yeah, the Yankton minimum unit.
The state?
Yankton minimum unit typically, and I, I believe we get some from Springfield as well, sometimes even from Sioux Falls, but most of the time it's right here. So we do not choose who comes here. We can approve or deny who they send, but there is an individual that I communicate with, with our Department of Corrections, Katie Albridge is her name. She, she takes a look at our program criteria. These individuals have to follow the same criteria that everyone else who enters shelter does. Um, and she makes sure they fit that, then they send them to us for approval, so. Uh, but that's been going well, uh, and so we've been able to add those programs. And then the last thing, I know I mentioned this in the letter, but it's very exciting. Uh, South, or Pathways is one of four entities in South Dakota that is piloting a youth homelessness demonstration project. And that's through a grant directly from HUD. And basically, we have a, a two-year grant period to provide services directly to eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. And, um, what we're doing is, we're purchasing a house, purchasing another property adjacent to our facility, and that will be used as transitional, transitional housing for those individuals, what, four units? And, um, and the, the goal there is just to catch them at that early age, break that cycle early. A lot of these individuals will be coming out of foster care or have had, you know, run-ins with the law. Um, there might be justice involved. And I know the justice system is getting involved with, with this YHDP, so we're really excited about that. That's been going on for about the past year now. And so to do all these addition, you know, all these additional program, we need more staff. Um, you know, we have, for the longest time, we had just a few of us. Now we have twenty staff members. We have seventeen, uh, scheduled paid positions and then we have three people who are on call. And it's just been amazing to see the growth over the years. But that comes at a cost. You know, we, we operated really bare bones for a long time, doing what we could with what we had. And then we took a leap of faith and just, like, we, we, our community needed it and the numbers that we're seeing um, o- over the past year and a half since we opened that new program, I mean, it's, it's apparent that our services are needed in our community. So we need more staff, you know, as you heard, we need more staff. We need more space for, uh, households with children. Um, but we're at a point where we kind of have to pump the brakes and our budget this year is about one point two million dollars. And that, it's almost double from what it was last year. And a lot of that's payroll, a lot of it's programming costs. And some of those are just one-time grant costs, you know, home, funding to purchase a home or run this program or that program, but needless to say, we need to really increase the support from our community and, you know, that's gonna come from individuals, legacy gifts, starting an endowment, that type of thing. But the county, obviously, you guys have been giving us ten thousand dollars for the past few years and that has been crucial to our services. Having those unrestricted dollars to pay the bills or we can also use it as matching funds for other grants. So as, as in the letter, I'm requesting twenty thousand for twenty twenty-four. I know that's doubling the request, but keep in mind, our budget has also doubled. And we understand that we're not the only agency or service that the county supports, so we know that we need to diversify our funding, so. Um, I asked twenty thousand. If there's room for more, great. If you can't go that high, obviously know that we appreciate what you're able to provide to our program. But that's a quick snapshot. I don't, I, I definitely wanna save time for questions from, from the commissioners here, so I, I guess I'll give you the floor and, and if, if there's time for that, or if you'd like me to just stop, I can do that too.
You know, I, I support your program and I, I think you've done a great job. Um, the county commissioner and me is, is concerned. We've had reports from our sheriff and our state's attorney and our JDAI and you wanna help people, we wanna help people too, but when we bring, um, these individuals who are, are down on their luck into our community and, and they don't make it, now they're on us to take care of it. So if we bring in juveniles who've had a tough road from other communities, Yankton County has to pay for it now. And so we've spent in the last ten years, almost a million dollars on juvenile detention. We're gonna have to hire another attorney. Our state's attorney's budget is exploding. Um, juvenile detention costs are going up to four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, in digit medical services, so if somebody comes from Nebraska and goes to your program and it doesn't work out for him and they're in this community and established residence, now Yankton County has to pay for it.
Sure.
If they move in from another county and they're here, I think thirty or sixty days, now they're Yankton County's problem and we have to pay for it. And we're seeing it with our sheriff, our jail, juvenile detention, uh, all of that. And so I, I get what you're doing and you wanna help people, but there's another side to this too and we gotta be careful about, about that as well. And we're con- like I, I told the last guy, we're contributing, um, a lot too with the property tax and I, I don't believe we, you guys pay property tax.
Not on our shelter, but our other four properties we do.
So have you applied for a property tax reduction on those for nonprofit?
I have spoken with the Register of Deeds about it. I believe it's the deeds.
Equalization.
Equalization, sorry, yeah, yeah.
So, and, and I, I know when people come in and, and request funds, a lot of times they forget that. I don't know what that, uh, it was an old motel, but I would bet that that was a substantial amount that they paid on property tax. But now it's.
And we just pay road tax on that property.
Yeah, well, that's a special assessment to the city, so.
Sure.
The city actually gets both sales tax and property tax. We only, we, um, so talk to the city.
Well, we, oh, yeah, that's fine.
So, so, but, but tha- that's actually in addition to the ten thousand you're getting from us.
Sure.
You're also not getting, um, that, so we're having to take other taxpayers' dollars and then contribute, so like.
That's a fair way to look at it.
Yeah, don't, don't get it wrong. We, we support what you're doing, but we're, we're really seeing another, another side to this and so you know, I, I, I've, for the whole time you've come here, I've supported the ten thousand dollars, but now we're seeing, you know, a huge ex- expansion. You're going from forty-eight to eighty-four people. I mean, I just, I, I just wonder, there, there can't be eighty-four homeless people in Yankton that are from Yankton. I mean, they gotta be coming from other places, aren't they?
So I'll tell you, we still, historically, since I started, are, of the people we're serving, over ninety percent are coming right from Yankton, Yankton County. Uh, the remaining ten percent is from within a sixty-mile radius of Yankton. And you've got Sioux Falls, Sioux City and Norfolk that have shelters. Heading west, you don't have a shelter till you hit Rapid City.
Sure.
So second highest population we serve is from Charles Mix County because, well, tribal reservation. Not a lot of services there. It's closer to come to Yankton than it is to go to Sioux Falls. Also further west from that, usually as far as winter and very seldom, but they would rather stay in a smaller community. So naturally, they're coming here, they show up on our doorstep. Well, it's our responsibility to take care of them too, so I get that.
I, no, and
But.
you got a good heart and, and you're, you're following your passion and I, I have a respect for you, but you, we're, we're looking at this budget and we're seeing, we're seeing the other side of it too and so.
Sure, I, and, yeah, and I understand that.
It's tough, um, with what we're, we're doing too, so.
And that's why I said, you know, we, we know that we need to diversify our funds. I mean, if, if we don't go away, I guess, then people just have to keep walking all the way to Sioux Falls, you know, so.
What's, what's your wa- rate of where people that enter and then just don't pass your program?
Success rate?
Yeah.
It's so hard to determine, especially now with the night-by-night program, um, but we, we've maintained that seventy to seventy-five percent success rate since, since I, we've been keeping track of that. That was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, since we started that. Recidivism, people coming back into shelter after leaving successfully. Um, and I, I'm starting my eighth year there now. And so we're starting to get to see some length of time from, you know, the first, the people we served when I first got in, when we started tracking that. It's right, it's between five and ten percent of people since then that have come back into shelter. Sometimes, you know, that's, our financial assistance programs are very important for that.
And I wanna point this out, Jesse, uh, you said your budget this year, your, uh, was over one.
So one, one point two million this year.
One point two million, so I was putting in two, two thousand dollars, uh.
Twenty.
Or twenty thousand, yeah.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. We're a small part of that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Absolutely, yep. And like I said, the ten thousand has been wonderful.
I, I, I understand exactly what Dan's saying.
Sure, I, and
I do as well.
Yeah, it's nothing, your, your mission is very, very admirable. I don't, don't get me wrong. I, I wish, I, I wish, uh, we could change human behavior for the long term and I.
I would love to be without a job, yeah. I'd love to go work for a for-profit company somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
Yep. No, I respect that and I completely get that, so.
Do you, like, as far as the, the, the twenty-five percent that just, it doesn't work out, do they generally go back or do they stay in Yankton? Do you, do you know kind of what happens to them or?
There, there are, so we, we have a policy that they need to stay. If we have to ask them to leave for whatever it is, they have to remain out of shelter for thirty days before trying again.
Okay.
Um, it, it's, it's for accountability. It's also to give people on the waiting list a chance. So a, a variety will go to other shelters. They might go to Sioux Falls, they might go to Sioux City or Norfolk. They might go crash with a friend or a family for that time until they can come back and try again with us. So very, um, I don't have percentages on that, but, yeah, it's hit and miss.
But you're also helping them get employed and.
Yeah, correct, yep. It's, it's wraparound and if we don't offer a service, we partner with it. We, we collaborate with other entities. Uh, we can't do it all, so we have twenty partners that, you know, that we work with on a regular basis. Um, Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health and the school district and Heartland Humane Society and just all, pretty much all the nonprofits we have some type of partnership with in town.
The mental health need in, in the community just, we, is huge and, uh.
Yeah, the expansion with Lewis and Clark, I think, is very important. We're excited to see that.
Very well, very well needed.
Yes. So, no, I appreciate your thoughts and comments and happy to answer anything else if, if there are.
For your new, new properties, I would look into your, you know, the director equalization and, and do what you can to if you, you, I believe that you run some sort of non, it's a nonprofit and I think that should be able to be exempt from property tax. And then that would be something that would help you, because if you're not paying that property tax, then that is just basically like.
Absolutely.
It's, you know, and it's pretty much the same thing as us giving you a donation.
Yep, no, you were, you were a hundred percent correct. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Well, we appreciate everything you do because you are making our community a better place.
Appreciate that. Well, thank you. You guys know how to reach me if anything else ever comes up, so thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thanks.
No crystal, right?
Okay, I think you left off at clerk, the one five five number.
Your organizations.
Let's say leave it. If we, if we need catastrophic legal expense, something, is it? Am I right? Basically, if we, is that a huge legal expense? It's kind of like an insurance policy, right?
Yes.
Yes.
That's pretty really huge, huge, correct?
Is it over a hundred thousand or something like it's, it's?
Our bu- it's only, you mean our budget?
No, the clerk, is it over what, over what dollar amount is that? Is it over a hundred thousand or it's? Or do you, do you?
Yeah, I don't, I.
It's pretty high up there.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure.
Predatory animal.
Any questions? Spoo onto the decks.
And this is from the state. This is what we have to pay.
Predatory animals. If you cut off the gopher's tail and take it to your grappler, you get a quarter.
I, I.
That ends, that ends pretty soon, don't it? Or maybe, maybe already did.
You don't, you don't get it for gophers. You get it for possums. I did, I did read this codified law. We can set bounties for like coyotes and stuff though, maybe we. And you know what happens? They, they have to bring them into the auditor to verify. No, that's true. Read, read it.
I know, years and years ago they did. We have little receipt books down.
Yeah, we can, so, maybe we bring, maybe we bring that back.
Yeah.
No.
Maybe, or we'll bring it back.
Please and mange.
And you know what? I bet, uh, if you retire in the next few years, we, we let you take it, whether.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Of my memory, or something like that.
You know, too bad Gene isn't here. Now, this, to me, seems like this would be a fund that could just go away. I, I know Bruce calls on the, the state, uh, game fishing parks board and.
And I, I would think that the state could just handle with all the licensing and all the, the uh. License and the fees they get from Yankton County, I would think that they could just absorb this little bit of money.
Yeah.
Instead of charging us for, for that.
Well, you know, they got all these drawings that they got, you can buy fifty dollar tickets for a new pickup. I mean, it's, it's just like they're coming up with all this stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't know. That, this is just another, one of those one mandates from the nineteen thirties that's just never gone away.
The, the next one would be, uh, care for the poor.
And this is just any hospital doctor?
And, uh.
That one big one that we just, that we painted twenty-three, that was just from the lawsuit.
Okay.
So, so are we, are we part, are we part of that catastrophic?
The whole state.
The medical then, or would, would, did, have we submitted any of those medical claims to this or?
Yes, I, I do a report every year of how much we spent.
And do, does any of that come back to us for, for that?
No, well, yeah, we still get, we get, uh, money back from that. It's, um. Depends upon how much we spend.
Well, it's a hundred thousand, the projection is a hundred thousand less than last year. Uh, or less than year to date, actual this year. Uh, do you think we can live with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Contact.
Art, did, did Rebecca wanna come talk to us or is she?
Um, they usually don't, cause you guys have to decide, but if you want, I can have her come. At the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, what do you guys think? Do you wanna hear what the contact? I mean, they used to do a lot more for us and I guess that's kinda changed a little bit with the welfare, so.
Jennifer did a lot.
Do, do they still do, um, like pay services? So. I, I guess i- in my opinion, and Patty, back me up here if I'm right. W- we have a statutory requirement for a lot of this poor stuff and if they didn't do it, usually that falls on the auditor's office. Does it, does it not?
On some counties, yeah.
Yeah, so some, so I mean, by them taking this over, I mean, it, it does kinda free up. You to do more things, I mean, they would.
Well, we never did it anyway. It was either the contact, you know, Jennifer did it, Adamson.
Yeah.
You know, then it was transferred to the state's attorney, so.
Okay.
I was lucky enough, I didn't have to.
Yeah.
I've just always thought that, uh, uh, the community would be better served if, uh. All of these, uh, type, uh, entities were under one roof.
Yeah, you know, I, I think you're right. On one level, no stairs.
Anything else on the contact?
No.
Catastrophic, two thousand bucks.
This catastrophic, is this poor relief?
And, uh, WIC.
This is in the nurse's office?
Yep. This is a requirement, is it not?
Yeah.
Anything else about WIC?
No.
No.
Mentally ha- handicapped, uh, expenditures.
That's another county or state mandate, is it not, I believe?
Is it, is that what goes to, uh, Lewis and Clark or?
No.
No.
This is, um. And we, um. If, if, um, uh.
Indigent.
Yeah, basically.
Okay. Mental health illness board.
And then is it, uh, the hearings from Lucy and.
Any comments there?
Do we ever get any income back from hosting these when there's individuals from other counties that we host? And then where does that fund go or where does that?
We have a fund, mentalist fund that we get, well, they're paying their, they're actually just paying their bill, cause this is what.
So, so we have to, we.
These are the hearings.
Okay, so we have to pay for the hearings. And then it, so, so, somebody who's, comes from another county, comes to Yankton, we have the hearings in Yankton. We have to pay for the hearings and, but that person just has to pay for their bill?
Yeah, we're, what we're here doing, we're paying for Lucy.
I, I know, but there's no reinv- so somebody comes from Bon Home County and has a hearing here. There's no reimbursement for Bon Home County to have the hearing?
Yeah, we have, uh. In twenty twenty-two, received almost fifty thousand.
Okay.
But we also have a large list of accounts receivable from certain counties, don't we?
Yeah, yeah.
That don't, don't pay.
And, and I was, yeah, I was looking, I was looking actually through the, the documents on that and it seemed, we have a. I believe, uh, we have a larger, um. Mental illness board expenditure than even Pennington County, whose population is much larger than ours. And I just was curious about, about, about that. Are, are we not getting properly reimbursed for that? Or what, what's going on? Um, is that, or is it not?
Karen, Karen sends the, the, we get the claim from, from each county.
Okay.
Uh, from the mental illness hearings.
Okay.
And Karen sends out the bills to the, to the county.
Okay.
And the county pays those bills.
But what if they don't pay though, then?
Counties usually pay. And we don't, uh. Uh, for individuals, you know, individuals aren't senti- or sent bills.
Okay, so the, I get we would pay for individuals in Yankton County, but. Individuals that they don't know where they're from, then we, we have to pay for those as well. If they can establish residency in another county, then that county is billed for them, is that correct?
Well. That's the Human Services Center, Center bill. That's what we pay for that. This is just for hearings, for the attorney.
For the attorney.
This is what we're paying out of this.
Okay. Why are we, I guess, why are we hosting, so, uh, we're hosting them for HSC then or what? I'm trying to understand.
I, um, I, I don't know where, how come, uh, Lucy. But it, they're just in charge of the mental illness hearings.
Okay.
And they're just from other counties, from the HSC, that they're, um, on the board for the mental illness.
Okay. It, it, and I guess I'm, maybe this is something we need to follow up on and, and I guess I'm, I'm wondering why. This isn't a, it, this seems like this is a big expense for Yankton County and it's not really a huge expense for other counties.
Is that?
I don't know why though, I guess.
Is that in that, uh, state report?
Yeah, and I'm trying to find it, uh, right here and, uh. I, I don't know why that is and, and if, and if the reason is, is because we have HSC. I understand that, but if we're hosting mental health hearings for the state and. HSC hospital, then the state should be reimbursing us for it, cause we're providing a service for the state and not, you know, you know. That's my point, I guess I'm making, so, uh. And it seems to me like that's probably likely the case. Um, it, it, I mean, it, do you know Patty, is that, is that the case? Are we, since. HSC is located within Yankton County, is that the state's attorney's office is providing the hearings? And then.
I think just the men- mental illness board is in Yankton County, so all the surrounding counties. You know, if there's a mental illness hearing, and I presume it would be from the HSC.
Okay.
That they must have been admitted to the HSC.
Okay, you know, and that's, that's something that I think we should probably talk to our representatives about. Cause that's, that's kind of an unfair burden to the county. It's, it's no different than Bon Home County. When there's a, a crime happens in the state prison, Bon Home County, state's attorney has to prosecute it. But I believe they're reimbursed for that, cause, you know, I don't know, probably beat it to death enough. But it just seems like another example where we're not fairly compensated for a cost. That's caused by the state, but comes out of our pocket. Am I wrong? I mean.
No, and I, I think this is a big enough number to where we need to investigate it and find out what actually is the case.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing if I can find it here, cause I remember I ran across this, um. Once.
I think this is another example of it. If we had a county manager. It would be one of the things that they would be monitoring and working on. So, let's move on to economic development.
Well, G- Gary, would you be willing to look into this for us, this, uh, mental health illness board? And try to find out the reason why it is what it is. Uh, my suspicion, my, I suspect that. It has something to do with HSC, uh, but. You know, if we're not getting properly reimbursed. Because of the state, I, that's something that needs to be fixed if, if, yeah, it's really.
Where do you see economic development? The next on my list is operating trips. Maybe I got two of them stuck together.
You got it?
Yes, I do.
Requested budget, fifty grand. Nancy, do you wanna talk to that?
I asked Karen, and she said HSC also pays us for those mental illness.
Where does that go though?
That's, the money goes into the mental illness. There's a fund here.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I didn't realize we were on the agenda, cause economic development was not part of the posted agenda that I saw.
No, I didn't, I didn't.
But that's okay, um, I have no problem.
You've been sitting here all day.
I know, it's a great learning opportunity. I enjoy city and county budgeting processes. It's an illness, I know. Um, I will say that the request that is in your budget is an outstanding pledge that you have from the Yes Three Capital Campaign. So there has been no contribution to the Yes Four Capital Campaign, which is currently working on workforce development. And housing primarily. A lot of the initiatives on the Yes Three Campaign were quality of life projects within the community of Yankton. As well as workforce. So those are the two, uh, that were the primary focus of Yes Three. So we appreciate you continuing to fulfill the pledge that was made, um, it'd be six or seven years ago now. But happy to answer any questions.
So I think, uh, prior to the beginning of this year, there was a question on what is actually owed yet on that commitment.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have that number?
Uh, I think you have a hundred and fifty thousand left and this would, uh, bring you down to a hundred. But you have been, it, it might not, that might not be right, because you also started making some twenty thousand.
Yeah, I think it's maybe a little less, but not much.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, twenty-two, you only paid twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so it was a different number and you had kinda changed the payment schedule, uh, rather than doing the fifty.
Well, there's a number of great things that have been going on, uh, in Thrive, in the community and, uh. Do you wanna touch on any of those?
Yeah, absolutely. We're working right now on the plan for Garden Estates, which is part of an. Uh, a twenty-eight acre parcel that we're developing, uh, the ninety single family lots. Out there, we do have an option on eighty acres total that we will be executing by the end of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we are currently working, uh, through the process to try and access some of the South Dakota housing. And redevelopment, or the Housing Authority dollars for grants or loans for that project. Uh, we are also working on giving away two parcels of land in, um, conjunction with our partnership with Manitou. So we have a pro- two parcels, approximately six acres, that we're looking to develop multifamily housing on. That project also, uh, will be eligible to access, uh, the South Dakota Housing Grant or Loan Program. So we can apply for those dollars. There's no guarantee of getting those dollars, but those are two of the primary projects, uh, that we're working on right now. Um, but there's always a number of things that we're juggling along with that.
Well, you were primarily responsible in the last year for bringing Manitou.
Correct, that is by far, yep, the biggest project, um, that we have had in the five years I've been here and a number of years previous to that. Uh, one of our goals is to allow for our current companies that are existing here in Yankton, is to grow and expand. Rather than working hard to bring in a new manufacturer who needs two hundred and fifty or four hundred employees. Which will then just stretch our workforce, uh, even more thin. So what, uh, this was a huge success for Yankton. Uh, we're very appreciative of Manitou choosing to expand here in Yankton. As well as in Madison. There was no guarantee that both plants were going to have expansions. So it was great to work with the Governor's Office of Economic Development and put together proposals and also with the city of Yankton. Who offered a number of incentives for that project to happen as well. So Thrive did not actually contribute any dollars into that incentive package. Those both came from the state and the city.
Put lots of hours.
Lots of time, but not actual cash extended in an incentive. But that's also part of the, um, the reason that we were able to work on a land deal as well. So there's just a lot of, uh, things that are happening with that project and, uh, super excited to see all the progress out there. If you haven't driven by lately, I would encourage you to do so.
Yeah, as far as workforce housing goes, our health, short are we still in, uh, the community? I mean, S, best estimate?
Hundreds of units still.
You know, I, I really think that there's, uh, the county has some untapped, uh, ability for some more housing. Um, you know, I, I, I guess personally, I feel, you know, particularly there's, some of our lo- lots are. Just too big, you know, like our, our one minimum of five acre lots, you know, that was probably appropriate, you know. Twenty years ago, but I mean, a lot of people don't want a five acre lot. It, it just, you know, that's too much. Who wants to mow that, that much, you know, and, uh. You'll, a lot of places you'll have, uh, you know, one acre minimum lot and then across the road, it's five acre minimum lot. It just doesn't seem like it's, uh, you know, makes a lot of sense, so we need definitely to relook some of that stuff up, so.
It sounds like that could be some engaging conversation to happen amongst the commission. If you can have some specific areas that you would designate for that type of housing, because I still know that the infrastructure. Uh, will be a challenge for some of those areas as well.
Gary's got a resolution for all of that.
Well, we, we have been changing a lot of our rural transitional, yeah, to one acre lots. That, with people that were interested in that and, and that's a good start.
Yeah.
That's, but we, we do have to look at all of them and see. The problem is that it's hard, once you get started in its own. It's hard to have, then all of a sudden change it to one acre that was already designated for five acre. And a lot of those homes are already existing. It's a little tough, a little more challenging.
Um, the garden estates, is that, um, is that gonna be a TIF or PID for this?
Yes, that will be a tax increment district. Uh, we will be applying for that, which will keep the homes in that area. That number has been increased. It used to be three hundred and forty thousand or less. It's actually three hundred and eighty-five thousand now. Or less. But the beauty of us being the developer of that. If we are able to access some of the grant dollars, we should be able to keep our lot cost low. So the builders, who we hope to sell them to local builders, three, five, seven at a time, uh, for a lot. Um, having them put more money into the home. um, having them put more money into the home than into the dirt that the home is sitting on. So, that's what Thrive is trying to do, is lower the overall cost and taking the risk. There is significant risk in a project like that. So, I, I don't want to downplay that at all, that we're taking that risk off of the developer or off of the home builder and we're taking that on as the economic development grew.
There's also gain, as there, there could be gain, as happened when we did the uh,
As West, uh, Westbrook One, well, TIF rules have changed since we did Westbrook One. So, it can be looked at a little bit differently. Uh, but really, the overall goal of what we're trying to do is provide low-cost dirt. So, families can afford to come in and build homes and have great jobs in Yankton and have their kids in the school district and um, make this their home.
That's, that's harder and harder to do.
Yeah, we're hearing from a lot of the local uh, smaller developers, they just can't find the land anymore. There's, and, and they don't want to invest in a twenty acre parcel and break it down and have all the infrastructure costs and take the risk. So, that's where we felt it was a role that we could play again because we found success in Westbrook One and we are hoping to find that same success in Garden Estates.
Yeah, I'm finding that with the people I've talked to with VA loans, um, you know, it's a, some, something veterans earn, but VA loans assess only the house and not the land around it. So, you can get a VA loan, but you know, in our ag area, it's minimum twenty acre lot. But you only get valued on the house and not the land, so you can't use a VA loan for something like that anyway. And it's kind of a, a gut punch to the guys who, you earned that right, but you can't even use it to, so it's unfortunate, so with that. Uh, last question I had is uh, I know there's been some recent legislative changes. Uh, SB twenty now raised the uh, amount of uh, what was it, valuation from seven hundred and fifty thousand to two point five million. Are you guys planning on taking advantage of that? I guess it's good for you if you can. I mean, uh, are, are you guys at your cap now or?
We were a couple hundred dollars over the cap, the previous seven fifty.
Okay.
And I would love to say that through Garden Estates, we're going to be able to utilize it, but you can't. Because if your land is in a TID, it is taxable. So, whether it be uh, the land that we own that's in the TID out by Manitou for Gale Drive, that had been in that exempt, but now that it's in a TID, it's actually taxable. So, it's costing Thrive more money as well as Garden Estates. Once that TID is established, it will start to be taxed on our side.
Okay, well, because again, that's uh, like I, I've told a, a few of the individuals who've come in and um, request funds is that, that's our main source of revenue is property tax and um, with two and a half million dollars, you know, that you guys aren't paying taxes on, that's coming out of us and other taxpayers are having to pay for that. So, that really in a lot of ways is.
Own two and a half million dollars, so we're taking advantage of about the seven hundred and sixty thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty, but that, but that's still a substantial amount and don't get me wrong, I'm glad you guys have that available to investors coming in. But if you did have to pay um, property taxes on that, you'd be, um, you'd probably own less land and it would be harder for you to develop. So, I'm glad you have that as an option, but um, we have to shift the burden onto somebody else. So, so it is, it's an advantage, I guess, to both of us.
Right, and there are some properties that we do own, um, either through partnerships or that are revenue generating, the data center that's out at the corner of West City Limits Road and uh, Twenty-first Street there. That's a property that we do pay taxes on. So, not all of the properties we own are exempt.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just appreciate everything you do for the county.
Thanks.
Thanks Nancy.
I enjoy doing it. Thank you.
Can we jump down to the jail building? Any questions on the forty thousand dollars?
And that's just to put something in there. Uh, we're not, you guys uh, made a motion, I think, last year not to put any more money in there.
Okay.
Is this the operation transfer out or where, where we at?
No, it's actually jail.
Did we?
It's after that operation.
The, the operation transfer out, I have um,
What is that?
Right now, um, a figure in there. I don't have it on here, I just figured. Uh, but if you're going to do any changes to the budget, lower the budget, increase some, um, so it'll change anyway, so I'll have a.
Okay, so just.
Figure, yeah, I'll have a figure when we get done.
Domestic abuse.
This, this jail building though, that would be, that would be something like we talked about earlier, the capital expenditure fund.
Anything that they do in the building.
Now, I, I really think, now this was changed, um, was it last November or December? Is, is this that one that was changed?
We're not putting any money in there.
Okay, I, maybe I think we need to just um, reassess that though. Um, and the reason being is I know Sheriff Jim, uh, he, he always advised us and, and, and Don, you, you brought this up too, is I think we should keep a, a small amount in there. I know when the pipes failed in the female portion of the prison, it was four hundred and some thousand dollars. And if, I, I think if we just take a small portion of the jail revenue and we put it in here for jail ma- maintenance, when we have those huge expenses, it's in here and I, I don't know why. I, I know Sherry and Joe changed this in December before um, Preston got on. I don't, I don't know why they did that, but.
Cause there's, there was like nine hundred thousand in there and the state audit doesn't, auditors don't like that much money.
But it is, that money's out of there now? Is that, is it in the general fund or what?
No, it's still in there.
Still in there, okay. So, you just want to, okay.
Let me go check, see how much for sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine if that's the case, but I, I uh, yeah, we just, yeah, need to be careful because when, when stuff goes around in the jail, it's, it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
There's got to be a capital expenditure fund someplace.
You, exactly.
Set up so that when it could, a major thing like the boilers go out in this building, we got to pay for it.
And, and just like Jeff was talking, a hundred and forty, well, he said last year that elevator was a hundred and forty thousand. It's probably two hundred and forty thousand this year and if we're not ready for it, we're going to be, we're going to be in trouble.
Sure.
And so, um, yeah, and I, yeah, those, those uh, cast iron pipes, I think that was four, four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand. If we want to have that money there, we'd have been in big trouble, so.
Fiscal management.
Yeah, yeah.
Domestic abuse, ten grand.
That's, I think that's another state requirement. No choice, it's where it goes.
County buildings, ninety grand. I'm not sure what uh, I suppose that's his lights that he's talking about and.
Maybe, maybe it's not the worst to bump that up to an even hundred thousand.
It's about uh, six hundred and ninety thousand.
That's probably enough then, I guess for now, but I, could we put a note on there to visit with the, the sheriff on that? And I'd like to get his opinion on what he wants with that fund. I don't know, for county buildings with uh, is this for all county buildings or just this county building?
All of county buildings.
Uh, John's brought up some good points uh, with the building out in Irene and the building in Leesterville. And some of those, uh, maybe we need to increase that to a hundred thousand. So, we have some little bit left over.
No, that's levy.
That's a, what do you, what do you mean levy?
It's a tax levy.
Okay, so if we raise that, does the levy go up then or what?
It will go up. It, it depends. You know, if there's enough value, then it won't.
Okay.
And I won't know that till the end of the year.
Good, well, but raising it ten thousand isn't going to.
It should probably, there's not, not that much difference.
I, I guess, you know, it, they say taking care of, you know, buildings and putting a dollar of preventative maintenance in saves six to ten dollars in the long run. So, being on top of this is saving us money, I guess, so. But I, I would say a hundred thousand, but that's me.
I'm going to accept that, but I would also request a motion to have a five-minute break.
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say.
Brian Stewart said we have ninety thousand dollars left on the Yes Three pledge. I'll leave to another meeting, so I don't get too excited conclusions.
Yeah, there's not going to be much excitement.
So, is there any conversation going to happen on the wind turbines today or is all conversation moved to two six? Solar, yeah.
Tuesday.
Okay, I just wanted to share based on the.
I agree. I agree. Me too.
Which allows them to expand. I wish. Somebody dropped down and just shook it on the window, go here, I go, hey, I just. Okay, go on. And I don't know. Yeah, I, I, I was. Anyway, so that was a good night because it was a good chance. Well, Dan gets two hats, okay, give him five.
You already had a second.
I know, man, I gotta do something to pay back.
That kind of would have been his areas. No, it's good. Right, right.
Dan, did you, or, Don, did you fall again?
Uh, yeah, smashed my finger.
Oh.
I can trip over a string. This leg, this foot is so, every step I take, I can hear the bones grinding.
What did you do to that?
They, they said I walk bow-legged.
Oh.
And so, over time, and I had that boot that I wore for three, four years and it helped, but it's beyond that now, so I have to have an ankle replaced.
Oh, I bet that'll be so nice though.
I think so, I hope so.
Yeah. Oh, boys.
Dan? Dan?
Where are we at on county buildings?
County.
Historical.
Historical. Are we okay with going to a hundred thousand for that one?
Yeah, I am.
I gotta say that. I already penciled it in.
Yeah.
Call back to order.
The his- uh, historical is a levy, it's ex-levy, isn't it, so?
We uh, call back in.
Pardon?
Uh, make a motion and go back into regular session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, aye, aye. Oppose, say aye, most carries.
Nice work.
Historical preservation, that's a levy.
Do they get growth as well then? They get CPI or growth?
Value, if the value, county value goes up.
Like, is that growth, value, is that growth? Same thing, okay.
The only, their levy is still on fifty cents. That doesn't change.
Yeah, fifty cents per thousand valuation. Got it.
And this is a um, safety center building levy.
Now, we can't touch this, right?
No.
Debt service.
And this will be paid off?
Just a, because I have a schedule for payment.
And that'll be paid off in twenty twenty-five?
Yes. Yes.
So I, I know this is gonna be a few years off, but we need to have a ceremony when that thing is paid off. Cause that's a big accomplishment. We'll have you as our guest speaker, Don.
Did you hear that?
Yeah. No retirement for you.
Okay, um. Napa Junction, uh, that's.
Like I had said before, they, uh, they have scheduled payments for that, but they always make more. They make what they actually receive, so that's why the budget.
Yep. Alright.
Revenues.
Unless you guys can just go through and.
I always get a.
They're all, it's all, um. Projected.
Always get a kick out of all the delinquent taxes that.
Well, we're getting down at like two thousand seventeen or sixteen, I mean, we're, we're down. But I think that's an issue. That, uh. We really have to be attentive of, because, uh. Delinquent taxes could go way up.
If we get a bad economic, you know, Don, that you're.
I know that. They're saying we're. Uh, doing so great.
Marriage license, now that goes directly to domestic abuse, right, that ten thousand?
Some of it does, yeah.
Does, I, does the whole ten thousand, I think? Okay. And that, is that per state law or is that our choice to do that?
No, I think that's by state, I, I think it's.
Yeah, I think so too.
If they had a gun lobby, you ought to come in and tell us how to make up that five thousand dollars.
And I never put anything hardly for grants.
We got sixty thousand for zoning permits, that's pretty good. Fifty thousand for.
Well, on twenty-two, we received, you know, almost seventy-three thousand.
Fifty thousand for medical cannabis, that, that actually worked out pretty good to charge that five thousand for that, so.
I think it should be ten, raised to ten.
We. Let them get established first.
Yeah.
Uh, Patty, question for you, uh, on alcohol permits, we were visiting with Union County. And they charged, I guess, twenty-five thousand, I'm not saying to go to that amount, but we can charge. Uh, we have the ability to charge what we'd like for renewals, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we are at, what are we at? Are we at twelve hundred?
Uh, for alcohol, I think it's about, but.
Yeah, what, what is the commission's thought on, on that? I mean, I, I don't, I don't wanna gouge people, but I, I think it's been a long time since those fees have been.
You're talking about the, the liquor.
Liquor, yeah.
Just the liquor.
And, and the reason I say that is, in the past, we've had people sit on a license that hasn't been used for years.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's not fair.
That's not, uh, that's not okay, that's, uh, and that's one of the problems. That's out, just in South Dakota general, is the fact that we have this.
So.
Limited number that's set by population.
Set by pop, by state law, and, uh. So what Milton Tom were telling us, uh, us in, in Union County is they have, and, and I'm not saying we have to go to this amount. They said, there's this twenty-five thousand, they have no problem, and they said if somebody doesn't renew it, they have ten people who would gladly snap it up.
Twenty-five thousand might be a little high.
Yeah, I know, I, I agree, but, but maybe twelve hundred is too low.
I, I agree with you there, because, you know.
Yeah.
I, I don't know exactly what the open market does to try to transfer the licenses, but people in the, the historic is that it costs you quite a bit of money to get a liquor license. And it's not, and it's not happening here in the county. At the county office, it's on the open market.
Right, exactly.
Do, do, you think, I mean, you, you're. Do you wanna kind of think about what you, what you're thinking it might, you, you might be comfortable with, or, or do you, or how do you wanna, how do you guys wanna proceed with it? I, I don't know what the answer would be, maybe it's, I know it's been years since we even discussed that.
But I'm, I think if, if Union County's at twenty-five, I mean, I, I understand, I, with you, that's a high number to go from twelve hundred to twenty-five. But I think there should be a, we should pick a number, and there should be a step up program.
Here is, liquor licenses are fifteen hundred, Mayfield and Glenridge, by, I mean, there are eleven hundred because they're a smaller entity. And then we have a, for wine and cider, it's five hundred, and then for a package on, uh, a package off sale, it's a thousand.
Can now, now we set that rate?
The liquor.
Okay.
The malt, the malt is known, you can't.
Is there any, uh. Is, I guess, is there a. Like, list of, okay, surrounding counties that charge this rate that we could compare ourselves with? Cause I, I wanna be, I wanna be fair, I guess.
I could ask the, you know, I think bot, like them, they're gonna be smaller.
Yeah.
But I could check with, uh, in our eight county.
Yeah, no, that'd be, that'd be good, I, I, I just, I don't wanna be way off e- either way. Does that sound like a plan for everybody, or? Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think we wanna look at what, of what, maybe take a sampling of what the other counties are charging. Take a look at that, gauge that, but I think going higher on those licenses would be justified, especially since, yeah, otherwise, yeah, someone can just sit on them for, for a long time.
Yeah.
If they're not using them, or, we really wanna make sure that they're being used.
And, and you know, another aspect to look at too is, you know, we don't get sales tax and the increased, uh, you know, patrols with our share. That's the only way we can pay for it, really.
Yep.
So, I don't know.
No, I. Definitely think you need to look at that.
Alright, thank you Patty, we appreciate you looking into that for us.
Looking down through the revenue, uh, entries, uh. Anybody have any questions?
What's this, uh, federal shared revenue land, fish and wildlife? What is, what is that, I guess?
That's, um, they're, um. It's, uh, money we get from the state.
Mm-hmm. Okay, it's different than the pelt payment, correct?
Yes.
Do you, what, I'm not complaining that we get money, but what's the reason for that, I guess I'm trying to understand? It's not that much, I guess, it's a.
It's a thousand bucks.
Don't complain.
Get my bro.
I know we get.
I will let you know.
The payment in lieu of taxes, the pelt is for the federal land.
And that's gets distributed.
And, and we don't, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't always get that, that's only when that's funded by the federal.
No, we get it every year.
Okay.
Cause the townships that are in that receive the dollars plus the county.
Covid stimulus dollars, zero. I don't, I don't think that's coming back.
Uh, with Covid dollars, have, have we spent all that we need to spend and, uh. To be in compliance with the rules?
Yeah, you, you assign most of it.
Okay.
We, we're, we don't have to assign any more of it, it's all.
Well, I see they're starting to talk about going after organizations have abused that process. Uh, I wonder why he's going down on federal prison. Holds.
That's, that's, I did that. Because the state order said, don't ever. Keep it low because it could go away. Think of this as a bonus, cause you're gonna receive, you'll receive more money.
Okay.
Cause the one prisoner, the BIA prisoners, we hardly get any of that anymore. And we used to get, um, quite a bit of money.
Immigration holds are way down. We used to get a lot of, yeah, I, immigration holds too.
Boy. We're down on that old, uh. Ambulance year to date, aren't we?
The what's that?
Ambulance year to date.
Where's, where's that at? Uh, ambulance fees?
Page three.
Ambulance fees.
You know, and I think that's partly because of the new. That they were doing, the new billing system.
That was supposed to fix that.
Yeah.
The new billing system only took place about two weeks ago, though.
No, no, the, I guess I was saying that the year to date. The, uh, who did, who did we have quickment claimed?
Quickment claimed.
Not doing their job, basically.
Right, 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 right.
That, that's, I think was, what we're talking about.
But, we're roughly, uh, four hundred. Four hundred thousand behind where we should be probably.
Yeah.
We should get a new projection.
That's the, uh, beacon.
No, the, the problem is if, if they weren't billed within a certain time.
No, 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 I understand that, but for a projection for next year. And Kathy, Kathy submitted a bunch of bills that were still within the timeframe. See how that goes.
Do we have any legal, uh. Standing to go against the company for not submitting?
We're doing an audit right now.
Okay.
You have to take that number by three.
What's that?
This is, this is April thirty.
Look at that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Um.
Year to date.
Oh, yeah, it's just, yeah, cause I have to cut it off.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I usually do March, but.
Uh, Pat, Patty, for the wheel tax, um, we're at six hundred and thirty-five thousand. Do you have any idea what it would be if we went, we're at five dollars for four wheels, if we went five dollars maximum with twelve wheels? You have any idea?
No, I don't, see, that's, yeah.
But it'd be higher than that?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought when we talked about that a couple of years ago, it'd be another couple hundred thousand, I, I thought, but that's a real rough guess. Do you remember that, Gary, when we discussed that?
And I think we, we can do that just.
Anytime, there's no, there's no.
Put it on the agenda. For upcoming meeting.
But is it, is it?
Discuss a wheel tax.
Different wheels?
Yeah.
Amount of wheels, or can you even raise the five dollars?
No, I think we're, we're, we're limited to five dollars.
Okay.
Uh, you can't go any higher than five per state law. Um, and you can only go maximum with twelve.
Twelve wheels.
But for, for, like, other, like, if you're gonna do a tax levy, I think it has to be on the agenda July, before July first of the year, but as far as wheel tax, it can be on anytime. Wheel tax can be anytime, correct?
We're gonna put that on the agenda, who wants to?
You're our fearless leader, Don.
August first.
Yeah.
I nominate, I nominate, I nominate Don.
Or John.
John. John, John, John.
And put all, put it all toward bridges. But, you know, that. Six hundred and thirty-five thousand go into possibly eight or nine? That, that's an opt, that, now we're, now we're approaching the ability to fix something, you know?
What page are you on, where do you see that?
Uh, right here.
Oh, page one.
Yeah. I'm right there.
No, it should be in two oh one, it goes to the highway. All the wheel tax goes to the highway.
Going bridge.
Boarding bridge.
Yep.
Com- commission years ago, or not years, when they had started the wheel tax. Chose to put it all in the highway. That was even before me.
There are still some counties that I don't think use the wheel tax, I believe there's a couple, you know?
Or it's just put in the general fund.
I think it should be in the highway, though.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's what it make, you know? Don, see what you can do about getting us more of this bank franchise tax.
I think they're, they've enjoyed a pretty good, uh, stretch of, uh, of a run here, uh. I don't know what, what it takes, what you have to do to. To get that done, but. Gary, do you know?
No.
That's worth looking at. I haven't seen a lot of poor bankers or doctors. Maybe we should have a doctor tax.
Nine-one-one remittances, what, what is that? Intergovernal revenue? Is that the fee from the nine-one, like, for the cell phone tax? Got it. Uh. Patty, from, from what I was, have been hearing, and I don't know if you've, you have heard this as well. Uh, some of those wireless and nine-one-one charges, uh. Certain cellphone companies have, have gone, instead of cellular data, now they're selling wireless. And so they're projecting that those fees are gonna start drastically decreasing, have you heard anything about that? Because the way the laws are written is cell data or cellphone, and now, now they're calling it wireless, and it's so.
They, yeah, a lot of smartphones wanna switch you over to wifi calling.
Yeah, okay, so, so then, you know, that.
Do you have?
No.
Yeah.
Actually. Cell phones work way better off the cell network.
Yeah. But, you know, that's something, could you imagine in ten years, we, we might have to find a whole nother way to fund our dispatch center? If, if cellphone companies switch to wifi and there's no tax on wifi? Cause that's how we fund our dispatch, is the nine-one-one cell phones, I mean, but, but it could be, that could potentially happen.
I don't, I don't think that will happen.
Okay, I hope, I hope you're right.
The problem is that, is that that relies on having lots of public wifi's available. That's not the case, most wifi's are locked up, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we went through. Made the mistake of going with satellite communication versus the cell phones, the cell tones, towers to wifi, so transmitting documents in from over the road to the office. It's a total nightmare. Have you, that, you know, and the good thing is, is a lot of truck stops have their hotspots.
Yeah.
But.
But still, you have to connect to it, hope it's still, that it's a good connection.
Yeah, exactly. I guess I'm.
The only thing that, uh, I guess I haven't, uh. Don't remember us touching on, was the. The only thing that, I guess I haven't, don't remember us touching on, was the Boys and Girls Club.
That's in your budget.
It's in. Okay, good.
And I have it, well, they'll be coming at the next meeting.
Yeah.
So we have ten thousand. I didn't have Yankton Transit, do you want me to call them, or?
Don't, don't call them, they'll call us.
And we, and we didn't cover Historical Society, they never did show up.
Oh, they, I'm sorry, they did, they, theirs went down to twenty-five hundred Yankton Transit.
The Historical Society on the levy?
Yeah.
On the levy?
Oh, no, the, the one PM on the agenda.
Crystal.
Crystal never.
We, I think what, what do they ask, eighteen thousand?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? You know, that's one of those, it's the Yankton County Historical Society, they kinda have the county history, it's, what do you, what do you do, you know?
I know that a couple of the people that have been pretty prominent on, uh, work in that program are probably going off their board. And I think they want to. Get a program going forward that will ensure they can continue to operate.
Yeah.
So they'll probably be contacting us more in, in the future.
I still get to replace the two ones I have you done, that just adding was wrong.
Okay, so Patty, what's our next step?
Now we need to make some decisions, and you know, you guys all have to make some, if you wanna cut, if you wanna leave. And that'll, we have to do that at. Cause I will advertise probably the second week in August. And then the fourth week. And we'll approve, the note, the hearing will be on September fifth for the provisional. And then September nineteenth, is when we will approve the budget, cause that has to be approved by October first.
Okay, wh- what I need, and maybe I've got, maybe I just gotta come in and sit down with you or Dan or somebody else. What I need is, is a look at what we start with, what we end, end with, how much money we collect, how much money we spend. And I need to know what the total change is. And that's, I, I have to know that before I'm cutting budget. Or increasing budget. Anybody have any thoughts about that, or?
A budget, I, I have that figure for you on those sheets.
Which one am I looking at, the provisional?
Yep. There's a twenty, uh, the current one is twenty-four, and, and that's the total budget. That twenty-five, two.
Twenty-five, two forty, two eighty-three?
Yep, and that was last year.
That's right here.
So, which was last, last year's was twenty-five thousand, two hundred?
No, that's this year's.
And last year's was the twenty-five, eight?
Yes.
Twenty-five, eight, eight, two seventy. So it went down by.
But did this include the ARCA funds, though?
Six hundred.
Did that include the ARCA?
No, that's expenditures.
So the request went down six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
I kinda, like, like, I don't know, like, I, I'm gonna say it'd be nice, and maybe I, I could try to just do it when I get home, I'd like to, like, take all these in a spreadsheet and add them up and get the, the total, you know, cost of each one of these. So I, I, and is, is that the, the total expenditures request is? Is that the, where, where's the total request of all, all of these?
Each department is listed on there, the commissioners is, is commissioners first.
Is that in, is that in the provisional budget?
No, I'm gonna, I, this is just the last page.
Sure, yeah, and like Don said, I kind of, I wanna.
So I can send you that full. Provisional budget.
I think, yeah, we're probably gonna be just done for the day, and just think about it, wait till we get those numbers together, and then just look at it again.
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to call another budgeting meeting to discuss it, make sure we're all on, on the same footing, have Wanda here.
Because I have to have, you know, what you wanna change, cause it has to be it when I publish that provisional budget.
And that's.
I guess the, the only kinda change that I kinda wanna do is, you know, maybe with the pathway shelter, and, and again, I'm not against, I think his mission is, is good. But he's probably in a strong enough position that he's, he's expanding, you know, double or triple. He maybe not, doesn't need quite as much support from us as he has in the past, and that's maybe where we can reduce that down. And we are helping him out still by, you know, giving a property tax reduction on those facilities, which, which is, you know, an important aspect of it. If you're not paying property taxes.
To make a difference.
Well, I've had, I've had this mental challenge for eight years now on this. And unless I know the total picture, I, I can't say that that's, there, there could be, we could be looking at a reduction of ten percent of the employee expenses, or, or whatever.
But if, if you're looking at, when you're thinking of a budget that's, that's twenty-five million, and to cut, I mean, to cut something for five thousand or six, I mean, that's.
Right.
That's not adding up to hardly anything, that you're gonna, that is gonna change it that much.
I agree. I agree. That's why if we're, if, if the number comes up, that we're way short.
It's the highway department, that's, that's the only place that's got.
That's why our roads are the same as they were in nineteen sixty-four.
You're not, you're not wrong, you're not wrong.
And you.
Is, is there a way, Patty, that we could get these sheets again, but with the, the proj, or the year-to-date through June thirtieth instead of April?
I can run a new report. I mean, the year-to-date will be higher.
Yeah, 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 and that's fine, because we'll, we'll add two months onto the year-to-date.
But I.
And we'll have a better projection for the end of the year, this year, for current.
But, you know, that report I gave you. That really, it gives you, is giving you a total of the expenditures, and total of the revenue. The revenue is always estimated, cause we don't, we don't actually know what's coming in.
Right, exactly.
So you do have, as of now, what everybody put in, that is about that twenty-five million, two hundred, that is as of now.
Expenditures.
Expenditures.
And the revenues were what?
Ten million, one twenty-five.
So why do we come up with the fourteen million dollars?
That's the general fund.
So what happens, is, is the general fund going up or down? That's the question of whether we're, we're having a balanced budget or losing.
Compared to last year?
Yes, compared to year-to-date, take July one this year compared to July one last year, what does the general fund do? Have we drawn it down two million dollars? If we have, that's not good. That's what happened to Lake County. We, we can't let that happen.
We can only do that so many times, and we, I get what you're saying, yeah. I think maybe, we, we've had a long day, I think maybe we just call it, and we, we all go home and think about this, and come back refreshed, and.
I, I need an approximate date then.
Uh, where we're gonna have it, what, what do you need, the next meeting?
Yep.
Do you, Don, do you wanna come back and do another one of these, that you planned, Mr. Chair?
And I'll email, I'll mail, email you a report then from July twenty-twenty-three and July, or July twenty-twenty-three and July twenty-two. And that'll keep you held.
See what direction we're going.
And it'll be big print, huh?
I don't.
Well, we really, what we really need to know is what that general fund is doing. Cause if that goes down two million dollars before the end of the year, we're shot out of.
Well, this is a projection to, through the end of the year.
Yes.
And it looks to me like we've gone down sixteen-six to fifteen-eight, eight hundred thousand dollars.
And how much is in the general fund?
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying, the general fund, this, this column right here is reduced by eight hundred thousand dollars.
Compared to last year's budget?
Yes, well.
So we overspent by eight hundred thousand?
No, no, the budget that's in the general fund for twenty-twenty-four is down eight hundred thousand. And that could be because of, of. Different, like for my office, I don't, I don't have a deputy salary that's been here for eighteen years. I mean, it's gonna be a lower, so it's gonna be lower, and you know, I think that, the other offices, you know, are short. They don't have the salaries, so that might, the reason why they went, it went down. There's just.
If we looked at the general fund a year ago, July one, and looked at it, what it is today on July one. We'd have to, that would be our determinant on whether we had a break-even or a negative budget, I think. I don't like the way the state does this, but I think it's cause they can cover stuff up, that, that is correct, I shouldn't say that, but.
The way the state does, or we do legislative, does our budgets, every county budget is balanced. Because you use, and all counties have, have, is use the previous years' cash on hand.
But, but see, that's the problem, that, that's, that's where people go broke.
If your cash on hand is diminishing year after year.
Yeah, it's.
Then you're, you're on a path for.
Disaster.
Yeah.
What happens when you don't have any?
A government accounting or government, is not the same as a business. It's a totally different.
You watch the bankruptcies in counties and the state that come up, and we'll, we'll see what happens to the difference.
Well, remember at state convention, Don, they said that the state won't let counties go bankrupt. They'll just wait till the money comes in. No, no, they, they did, they were like, well, by, by state law, they won't, you can't go bankrupt. No, I get, I get what you're saying, Don, I, I.
You know, if a guy believes that, you have to believe the federal, federal government will be able to borrow money forever, I'm guessing they aren't gonna be.
I, I understand.
We gotta make it, we gotta make it so we're within reason.
Do you have a date, do you think?
Do you wanna do another special meeting?
I would like to, yeah, twenty-eighth of July, Friday.
Works for me.
Say, three o'clock.
You wanna go that late on a Friday?
Oh, I mean, we don't have to have all the presentations again.
Right.
Yeah.
Or, or would you wanna go like at a, on either a little bit in the morning and then be done early, or, or noon and be out a little later? I, I don't wanna go from three to five, it's beer drinking time.
I'm fine with from nine to eleven.
I prefer, I, afternoon works better for me.
Afternoon?
Afternoon, which way?
Noon till, noon till three, noon till, one, one till three?
One till three.
Ish.
We'll start at one, then. And I'll get you that.
I first, we hope.
Thought I stole your pens, or?
Nope. I put mine away already, I don't wanna dig it out.
I'm not arguing with you.
Pardon?
It's a good discussion, you gotta have it.
Yeah. Well, I've always appreciated how, how we really dig into this too, and learn, so.
I get confused with the government's idea of profitability. It's much different than most people's balance sheet.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second, thank you, everybody, for three-fourths of a day.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Brian, you said, right?